Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, April 27th special meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call a roll?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Quigley.
Present.
Trustee Luisey.
Present.
Trustee Alfassi.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am here tonight. There are no appointments, presentations, or public hearings tonight. So we're going to start with the adoption of minutes. So the approval of the minutes of the reorganization meeting of April 13th, 2015. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
Abstain.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund. In favor. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting of April 20th, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Do we have any correspondences from the clerk's office?
No, we do not.
We do not, no. That will bring us to the first opportunity to address the board on anything on our agenda tonight. Notice I'm smiling because there's nobody here, so, okay. But, uh, thank you anyway. We have just a couple of resolutions. Tonight, we are going to be voting on our budget. So the first is Resolution Number One, which is adopting the budget for fiscal year June 1, 2015 through May 31, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And we will have lots of discussion on this matter. I'm going to start off the discussion tonight. I prepared a statement, so I'll actually read it. So, uh, pardon me for reading. This year's budget process has been more difficult than in past years. Although we started our budget process back in January, and we've met for special budget meetings about a half a dozen times since then, this year's budget actually started over a year ago. Back in April 2014, which is just when we were wrapping up last year's budget, we decided that we needed to make some significant changes in the village's management policies and in the Treasury Department. Back then, we set out to hire the village's first village administrator, which we did with the hiring of David Burke back in July, who's here with us tonight. And we also decided that we needed to strengthen the management of our Treasury Department and bring back a deputy treasurer, which provides the checks and balances that every Treasury Department should always have. We hired a part-time deputy treasurer, Ryan Rueda, who's here with us tonight. And in this new budget, we've made provisions to move Ryan into full-time capacity. I made the decision to not reappoint our former treasurer, and we are now actively seeking out to hire a fresh treasurer with very strong municipal experience. I mention these changes because they're significant to the overall principles as to why next year's budget calls for a tax increase in excess of the 2% tax cap. We are taking steps in this budget to make sure that our budget lines are true and realistic. We are not fantasizing as to whether some of the expense lines, which we have no control over, will come in under expectations. We're budgeting realistic costs associated with these expenses and realistic costs associated with providing the services our residents expect, which is the primary reason why they choose to live and raise their families here in the safety and comforts of Tuckahoe. This year's budget calls for our expenses to increase by 2.55% and our revenues to decrease by 1.56%. When you put these numbers together, along with the slight decline we had in our assessment role, you get an increase in the tax levy of 4.98%, and that's what this budget calls for. I strongly believe that any municipality, or business for that matter, that has kept their payrolls and expenses low for many years will find, as we have found, that attempting to stay in a 2% tax cap scenario, when you have so many uncontrolled expenses increasing by as much as 5% or more per year, will force you to diminish the service you provide your residents or your customers. I don't see this as any more complicated than that. I also believe that if you start the slippery slope of reducing or compromising public safety and other municipal services like maintaining your roads, parks, sanitary services, community center, your library, that you start to create a municipality that may not be what you bought into. Now, with all this said, I do believe that there has been some merit in Albany's 2% tax cap program, which was to essentially craft a method of spotlighting the budgets of local leaders to go the extra mile in keeping their budgets in check. I feel that we did a good job before and after the tax cap was put into place. I would expect that other municipalities will eventually need to make a slight correction in their budgets, as we are doing here with this budget. So in closing, I'm very pleased that we are moving in a responsible and forward direction. The great interest in business and residents to relocate within our village or move here from the outside gives me great reassurance that Tuckahoe is on a roll. So with that, I am very pleased that I will be voting for our, in favor of our budget tonight, and that's going to be it for my comments. So I'm now going to pass the mic over to our deputy mayor, Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. I just wanted to illuminate for a second what the proposed tax increase of 4.98% means. And, um, and our village administrator, David Burke, provided us some data on this a short time ago. And what it really means is that for a house that we considered, we actually considered the mayor's house, which is, I would say, a nice house in the village of Tuckahoe, and certainly more than reflective of the, of the mean in terms of a house, with a 4.98% increase, that would mean $20 extra per month for that house in taxes. If we were to vote the budget down, that would mean, which would mean the default rate of 6.909%, that would mean $23 per house, per month. At the rate of 1.68%, which would be what we need to be under the tax, tax cap, instead we would get a, an $8, $8.33 per month rebate, which I guess would be something that's nice. But at what cost? We always need to be mindful of cost for value and to look for ways to achieve efficiencies. But I think we need to stop thinking about operating on a shoestring budget, just for the sake of a cap that's been mandated by Albany. I think doing so can be penny wise and, in the long-term, dollar foolish. I'll give you some examples. I think this village has been in need of a deputy treasurer to assist with the critical role of stewardship of this village's finances. I think we will need to hire a new treasurer who will dutifully carry out these responsibilities and assure that we are well-positioned now and in facing future challenges from an economic perspective. I believe we need a village administrator to facilitate our long-term plans and projects requiring consistent efforts that a part-time board cannot fulfill. We need an employee handbook. We need to achieve insurance efficiencies and other areas of focus that may outlast the tenure of a trustee. We also need to think about certain things that happened this year that were beyond our control. We had an increase in our workers' compensation rates, which resulted in $359,000 of additional These are a result, I believe, of the number of disability claims we've had over the recent years. We need disability insurance to provide a safety net for our civil servants who are hurt in the line of duty and unable to work. We also need to make sure that, and mindful of the fact that costs can increase when that's abused, because as you can see, those benefits are shouldered by the rest of us when it is. We need to reverse the trend of declining property values in the years to come. We need to encourage real property improvements, which will improve our tax base, especially with the interest rates at the historic lows that they're at. And we need to think about plans in this board that help to encourage that. We should petition Senator Latimer to lobby for the passage of the 1% tax that would come to the village if a new hotel were constructed. While I'm generally against new taxes, in this case, I believe they're justified, as they wouldn't be to our villagers and our residents, but to the hotel patrons who would make use of our services and should thereby contribute to them. I believe in some that we need Albany to get its act together, as many of the costs that we have to pay are beyond our control and more within theirs in the form of mandates. When that happens, I think maybe we can reconsider the tax, the caps that they're imposing. In the meantime, it's paramount that we maintain the essential services that make our village a wonderful place in which to live. I am not willing to cut these services further at this time or compromise them in any way, and I intend to also vote in favor of this budget for this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Uh, trustee Quigley?
Thank you, mayor. At the, the risk of being repetitive, I too operate on the development and planning of the budget, keeping forefront in our mind what the expected level of services that the village of Tuckahoe residents expect, and I think have always received in terms of the police, Department of Public Works, community center, library, and village hall employees as well. And I think that they understand that in order to maintain this level of services, that are really critical to maintaining the quality of life in Tuckahoe, that they are willing and expect to have to pay their fair share of taxes. I believe that my most important role as an elected trustee is to ensure that these types and quality of services meet not only the basic needs of the residents, but their expectations as well. And just as an aside, if people have been paying attention over the past couple of meetings, I've been working especially hard to secure additional funds for the library, to bring in a full-time librarian, and hopefully to increase the weekend hours. That didn't happen, but I think it should not reflect any thinking on part of the village that the array of cultural, educational, and entertainment programs are not important to the village. Indeed, I believe that the library is one of the real treasures of our village, and it's been disappointing, but I understand, also understand the need to be fiscally responsible to the members of the, the citizens of Tuckahoe. So the budget we're adopting tonight, it's higher than the sort of arbitrary figure, the 2% figure that comes out of Albany, but I think it meets our expectations, and I think it will meet the village residents' expectations reasonably well. The fixed costs in our budget, of course, are the biggest hindrance to any kind of progress we can make. Their health benefits, pensions, salaries, the worker compensation payments were made a mention. We're still paying tax surchari refunds to those businesses and residences that had been over-assessed in the past years. So because of this, the board has had to scrutinize every revenue and every expenditure line with great care, with the recognition that, of course, we have a fiduciary duty to the taxpayers of Tuckahoe. Now, as you've noted, as we have noted, we've also budgeted in this budget some extra expenditures, mainly for our village administrator and for increasing the Treasury Department. I think that these are short-term bumps in our expenditures that are, in the long run, are going to provide benefits and ultimately savings to the village. So trust me, and I know that our mayor and the trustees on the board up here will agree that we have reviewed and rereviewed each budget line in great detail, and there have been disagreements among us, and, but I believe that they were always made in good faith, and they're always made in an effort to craft a fair and responsible budget. I believe it is a good budget. It's not a perfect budget, but one that will serve the village of Tuckahoe, our residents, our employees, and our visitors well. So I plan to vote to adopt the budget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Quigley. Uh, trustee Luisey?
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to start off. I'm going to be repetitive as well. I'd like to begin by saying I respect and fully understand my fellow board's members' positions on this upcoming budget vote. I also appreciate all the time, effort, and energy that was put forth by our department heads with our village administrator in presenting their respective operating models for the upcoming year. The budget before you was no easy task to achieve, even at the current rate of 4.98%. The financial climate was made no less easy by the disappointing performance of our former treasurer. However, the buck stops here. This board has already undertaken steps to improve the performance of our treasury with qualified staff familiar with municipal operations and prudent financial planning. With that being said, this does not change my current position. I have wrestled with this budget for many, many weeks. Our current fund balance is now at $155,000, which resulted in a significant financial fiscal stress grade rating from the New York State Controller's Office. And that office defines fiscal stress as the inability of an entity to generate enough revenues within the current fiscal period to meet its expenditures. In order to remedy the situation, we now had to borrow money to pay for completed capital projects and to replenish our fund balance back to a, excuse me, healthy level. So in essence, we are borrowing money and paying interest to put money back in the savings bank, which we should have been gaining interest on. However, this board had no other option to remedy this circumstance. In regards to this budget, I remain committed to the capital improvement programs whereby we budget to replace police and DPW vehicles on a regular rotation. I remain committed to ensuring fair and equitable compensation to our non-union village employees. I remain committed to the village workforce that is bound by the collective bargaining agreement. These are just some of the necessary operating costs which we must fund to maintain our village. Over the past two budget cycles, the board has trimmed labor costs in the village court, police department, community center, village hall, and public works. The limits on our local taxing power caused these reductions in our workforce. There are no more realistic cuts to be made in these areas. Infrastructure repair is not exempt from the tax cap. As this trend continues, some areas of our infrastructure is bound to suffer from neglect. I am well aware of how the village was blindsided by a dramatic increase in workmen's compensation costs, which leads us back to the budget before us. A continued cap on our largest revenue stream, the property tax, must be offset by significant increases in state aid. Unfortunately, the current governor remains firm, and sustainable property tax relief will remain elusive. In my previous years on this board, we have stayed under the tax cap. For that reason, I believe it should be the village that should tighten its money belt rather than exceed the tax gap and ask the individual taxpayer to shoulder the burden. The argument has been made that for a single-family home assessed at $8,600, the tax increase will only be $246 rather than $102 if we had stayed under the cap. The monthly breakdown of a 4.9 tax increase seems to be inconsequential. But remember that $246 remains with the property owner going forward, and in subsequent years will not be reduced. I consider the effect this 4.98% tax increase will have on all our taxpayers, including seniors, retirees on a fixed income, young families, and single-family households. Will their incomes rise accordingly? What will they have to individually sacrifice to make their ends meet? What guarantees do I have the village revenue stream will increase dramatically enough to prevent another tax override next budget cycle? Projected tax increases from a 2012 report issued by BFJ Planning, expected village taxes from the Crestwood Development to increase from $18,000 to $51,000 a year upon completion. The Glenmark Project will generate $137,000 from the current $29,000. Be mindful, these are only estimates. Our constant budget drivers such as healthcare and pension costs are a certain cost component. Now take into consideration the $3,314,000 in bonds that will be issued this year and the substantial debt service costs that will now have to be factored into our next budget cycle. Going forward, I would ask this board to consider freezing funding for any capital projects going forward. Is it wise to consider $230,000 for a Crestwood traffic signal upgrade? We should also consider to put on hold $250,000 for sewer re-lining, as well as $100,000 for sidewalk replacement on Columbus Avenue. Let's take a step back and allow our revenue lines to progress to a reasonable level before proceeding with these projects. We should also consider curtailing various programs throughout the village in the interest of fiscal responsibility. Sometimes, we just have to say no. We cannot fund this activity event or program this year. Please forgive me for erring on the side of caution, but my principle of responsible government expenditures with what I feel in my heart will not allow me to vote in favor of this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you. Trustee Alfassi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to also acknowledge the efforts of my fellow board members, our village administrator, David Burke, and all our department heads. I'm very proud to be a part of this tremendous effort to vote on a comprehensive budget that does provide the village the services that Tuckahoe expects and deserves. As was said, this budget was difficult, and tonight, we vote on an increase of 4.98% in your taxes. I will be voting no. To expand on trustee Luisey's point of capital projects, I'm glad that this board has adopted my suggestion, which is to separate the operating budget and all that's involved in that process to tonight's vote, and separately to create a capital improvement budget and all that's involved with that process with open public hearings at a later date, and to vote on that, those projects and bonding therefore. This practice is the norm for many, if not most municipalities, and I argue, it allows a clearer focus on capital projects, what projects make sense to do now, the cost of financing those projects, and what projects can be held off. In past, the village budget and the operating budget and the capital budget improvements were combined into one vote. We're now going forward and moving those to separate votes. In addition to bonding for capital improvements, many municipalities, including Eastchester and Tuckahoe, this year and in years past, bond for tax surchari. It is more than likely Tuckahoe will have to bond for tax surcharis this coming budget year as well, and yet our operating budget has $130,000 allocated for tax surcharis. These tax certs that we're voting on tonight could easily have been reduced by $100,000 at least out of this year's operating budget and into a capital budget if it's necessary. In addition to these savings, we could have had a 2.5% tightening of our fiscal belt across all departments, which would have put us at the tax cap. Unlike this year's budget, I'd like us to, next year, have our tentative budget set at the tax cap, then see if there is a need for additional tax dollars, instead of, as we did it this year, which is having our tentative budget set at 6.09% and trying to work our way down from there. It's because of this I'm voting no on increasing your tax dollars. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you very much. Anybody from the public or anybody else wish to speak on this? Okay, if not, will the village clerk please take a roll call on Resolution Number One, which is adopting the budget we have before us for fiscal year June 1, 2015 through May 31, 2016?
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
Opposed.
Trustee Alfassi.
Opposed.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Let the record reflect that the budget does pass. That's going to bring us to Resolution Number Two, which is authorizing an increase as of June 1, 2015, for the annual parking permit fee for all commuter parking lots as follows. Tuckahoe residents will be paying $975. Parkway Oval parking lot is going to change to $675. Non-residents will be moving to $1,675 in our pay-one-price parking lots. Tuckahoe merchants will be moving to $875, and the Fisher, Lake, and Thompson Pay-One-Price Lot will be $1,675. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Three is authorizing an amendment to the payroll calculation for all employees that are not specifically covered in a collective bargaining agreement, or their collective bargaining agreement does not specifically require a certain payroll formula to begin fiscal year starting June 1, 2015. From the present annual salary divided by 365 times 14, which has been equaling the bi-weekly salary, to the annual salary divided by 26 equals the bi-weekly salary. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, this is just one of probably many items that, when you have a village administrator, you start to see there, you know, sometimes little things just start to tweak and they go a little bit astray. So this is just one of those minor items that, it's just a minor correction. So thank you very much for picking it up. Our village administrator has become a forensic accountant, I think, over the last couple of months, so, thank you, David.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Five is approving a $150 seasonal fee for a Sidewalk Cafe special permit. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisey.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. That's going to bring us to our departmental reports. We normally don't do it at a budget meeting, at a budget adoption meeting, and, um, so I think we're going to skip over that tonight. Miscellaneous business, our residents' community meeting is going to be at Parkway Oval, and I believe we're changing this date to Tuesday, am I right? Uh, May 5th?
Is it Tuesday?
At 7 o'clock? Yes, okay.
I apologize in advance, I won't be able to.
Okay. Um, and the next village board meeting, the regular monthly board meeting, is going to be on Monday, May 11th. And that's going to bring us, we're...
We normally don't do it at a budget meeting, at a budget adoption meeting, and, so I think we're going to skip over that tonight. Miscellaneous business, our residents' community meeting is going to be at Parkway Oval, and I believe we're changing this date to Tuesday, am I right? Uh, May 5th?
May 5th.
Is it Tuesday?
At 7:00? Yes, okay.
I apologize in advance, I won't be able to.
Okay. And the next village board meeting, the regular monthly board meeting, is going to be on Monday, May 11th. And that's going to bring us, we're, uh, we don't have any, no. So that'll bring us to the second opportunity to address the board, and since our deputy treasurer's laughing at me because there's nobody here tonight. So I want to thank everybody. It's, uh, as we all mentioned, it's been a difficult budget year, but we've made a lot of great strides, I feel, and things are looking up. So thank you all for your patience tonight, and if there's no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Till next time, Tuckahoe. Have a very good evening.